Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM and I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will look for a motion to approve our agenda. Robin?
I'm of approval, I'm so sorry, I'm of approval of the agenda, was there an HR, human capital agenda? Too many papers, with a human capital agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second.
And I have a motion from Robin and a second from Ally. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposition, same sign. That motion passes eight to zero. Next, we move to recognition of the audience. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and homeschool district for the record. We ask that speakers refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. This evening, two speakers have signed up to address the board. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Upon conclusion of the allotted time, a chime will sound and the speaker is asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound 15 seconds later, signifying the end of the speaker's time at the podium. I will now call our first speaker to the podium, and that is Jonathan Whitehill.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Whitehill. Go to Fargo Public Schools. I am a sophomore of Fargo South High School and play hockey for the Fargo South Shialing Bruins. Here's what high school hockey means to me. I get to play not just for the love of the game, but for my school. Ever since I started playing hockey at five years old, my goal was to play high school hockey for, first, for Fargo Davies, but then when the boundaries changed, I wanted to be a Bruin and represent my friends, my teammates, my teachers, and my school. I fell in love with high school hockey ever since I had the opportunity to try out and play for Fargo South. And when I was told by my coaches I made the team, tears of joy flowed from me as it was a dream that I had worked hard for and accomplished. I was so happy I couldn't resist to tell both my parents what an amazing feat I just had. Many people doubted me and that I would not be able to make it on the high school team and said that I would be cut from the program. I proved them all wrong and made the impossible possible. I was so proud to be able to get to wear the brown, white, and gold of a Bruins jersey. Being able to wear it is one of the coolest and most special moments of my life. On my first shift of a game against Mandan, I almost scored the first goal of my high school hockey career, which would have been very special for me. From that shift on, I, along with the rest of my team, were destined to get better and faster at each practice and game. With the help of our amazing coaching staff, with Matt Hanson, assistant coaches Warren Mack, Jake Skarperud, Alan Spriggs, and Jay Erickson, as they all helped me and my teammates get better not only on the ice, but also off the ice and in the classroom. At the end of the season, we were beating Fargo North, West Fargo, Cheyenne, and holding our own against Grand Fork Central and Red River. It wasn't just the coaches that saw us getting better, but each of us could feel it as we all had faith in ourselves. We worked together as we were getting better and better each day. We were together and would pick each other up. When one of us would make a mistake and say we messed, when one of us made a mistake and say we messed up, but you will get better at it as the season progresses, we are a team. In conclusion, stop trying to take away a game that not just me, but my Bruins teammates love so much. It hurts to see such a successful program end so soon and with so much potential. Go Bruins.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Our next speaker this evening is Charles Belair.
Hello, my name is Charles Belair. I got two boys that go down to Eagles Elementary. Some of you guys know me, some of you guys don't. My two boys have had issues at Eagles Elementary. From here on out, I would recommend you guys hire somebody to do a, that's not paid by the school district, to do an external investigation, because now I have other parents that are in that school, the school district, that are coming up to me telling me that the same people that my son, that put hands on my son, is, has done it a previous year. I think you guys should pull, open up and look into these schools. That's all I gotta say, just, you guys should have a person that's not paid by Fargo Community Schools to do these investigations.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Next, we will move to our reports, and there is no FEA report tonight, correct? Okay, just want to double check. So that takes us to our final legislative debrief, so I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you. We've, we had a lot of updates about the bills, so I just figured I would give you a committee overview of our work this year, and then also the district. So FPS staff, including cabinet, district, and school personnel, provided support and testimony in their areas of specialty, and in fact, some of their bills were passed successfully. The Government Affairs Committee provided Sunday updates to our area legislators for bills to be considered in the upcoming week. We submitted testimony, we had countless conversations with legislators. We also served as resources to legislators to help them analyze how pending legislation would affect district operations and funding. We conducted multiple media interviews. Some of us were even told legislators were using our weekly updates to prepare for floor speeches. Also, the Grand Fork School Board, and I just want to give them a shout out, they created their own Legislative Strategies Committee based on our own Government Affairs Committee model in Fargo, so I will touch base with them and see how the session went. And now the work begins. So even, even though we worked hard during the session, now our staff gets to write all the policies and apply all the bills. So thank you in advance for all the work that you're going to do for the bills that were approved. And then also, I just want to thank our committee members, Katie, Nimal, Kristin, and Ally, for your work. We paid attention, we did a lot of studying, we watched countless hours of live testimony and recorded stuff, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Also want to thank our staff for sharing their expertise. And finally, our elected legislators for serving. It's no small feat for what and the amount of time that you put in, so thank you for that. And I think that's it. That is the last legislative update, and I'm, next, Melissa will get to take over with all of the negotiations updates, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for doing all that. I know that was a really heavy lift. And I guess technically, we're going to dive into all of this at our work session, so there's still more to come. So, okay. And then Dr. Gandhi, do you have an admin report for us tonight?
Nothing for my report, just, as most of you know, last week was FPS, or sorry, Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to, again, extend my gratitude to all the educators in Fargo Public Schools as we wrap up the school year as well, for the incredible hard work and dedication they show to our students every single day.
Great, thank you very much. And I will look for approval of our consent agenda. Nimal?
I would like to approve the consent agenda with the, with the human capital actions.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Nimal and a second from Ally. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, same sign. That motion passes eight to zero. So we're moving now into our business section, and business item A, I believe, is memo 108, and that's coming to us from Bill.
Thank you. In February, you approved memo 80, which was the first phase of our guaranteed maximum price contracts for facility improvements. At that time, you were given a heads up that a second GMP package would be forthcoming. Today's that day. So tonight, we bring forward GMP two. GMP two is aligned with our continuing long-range facilities planning work, and it details all of the projects included. Our Director of Facilities, James Hand, is available if you have any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for James? Greg?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to mention that this, as Bill said, we were kind of warned about this, and we're given kind of rough sketches in the past of what this might look like, and then, as it was further refined, Planning Committee did see this document and review everything ahead of time.
Great, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
I move the approval of memo 108 as stated.
Okay, do we need to read the whole thing? Are we okay with that?
I can read the whole thing.
That can work?
Okay, that works. Okay, so we have a-
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ally and a second from Greg. Any more conversation, discussion, questions? Okay, Ann Marie, do you want to take the roll call? Clark?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Jason Nelson?
Yes.
Kristin Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Olenberger?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
Kristin, am I near? Yes, and that motion passes eight to zero. And next up, we have the first reading of our Unified Strategic and Operational Plan, so I will turn this back over to Bill. But I do want to note that there is no action on this tonight. This is a first reading, so he will introduce it. We can have discussion, but we don't need a motion.
Thank you very much. Right off the bat, I want to point out that there are two typos that are completely my fault. Under SI three, there is one operational plan project that is missing a closing parenthesis on a list of measure numbers, and on SI five R two, one of the Infinite Campus Operational Plan Projects mentions measure three. It's actually measure two. So in the second reading, we will correct those.
Okay, I have another typo for you. You can ask me about later.
Well, if you say it now, I'll just watch the replay of this and I'll catch it.
All right, on, let's see, page five of the document, the first paragraph that we're desired is repeated. It's because we really desire.
Okay, thank you for that. So why is Bill presenting our unified plan? If you look at Strategic Initiative Five Result Two and Measure Number One, that's my measure. My measure is to improve on the progress we made this current year by using an online reporting tool, and actually making sure that every effort is made to show progress in a way that you can view it, both in terms of the measures and the operational plan projects. So a little background on what we did this year. We built on last year into this year where we unified the plan so that we now make sure that we've got an improved strategic plan. We build our operational plan based on the measures of that plan. We then finalize our budget based on your approval of that plan. This year, we decided to base our work on the Franklin Covey Four Disciplines of Execution, which are focus on the wildly important goal, act on your lead measures, keep a compelling scorecard, and create a cadence of accountability. As a result, we have some notable updates. We do not have in this plan a Strategic Initiative Six, continuous improvement and accountability. Feedback from our leaders, both in the district office and in the schools, was this is now embedded in everything we do. There was no specific need to separate it as a strategic initiative. We have reduced the total number of measures, in some cases, by a good amount, very well received by the principals. It was their suggestion that give them a few high-impact measures to work on instead of 200, and watch and see what they can do. A scorecard tool is being developed homegrown. The Cascade Tool that we use this year is a fantastic resource that is a bit much for what we needed and at times was a little slow trying to access. So we're cutting out the middleman. We are going to build our own scorecard, and what that will do is it will allow us to customize how it looks. So we will be able to show the ongoing progress of operational plan projects that contribute to the success of each measure. Why that's important is that we have a lot of measures that are end of year. So until the end of the year, your only indicator of progress from us is going to be how we're doing on our operational plan. If at the end of the year, we say that we are 100% done with our operational plan projects and our measure does not reflect what we were looking for, it's time for us to reflect and find out what was the disconnect between what we planned to do and the results that we got. I thought I would give an exhaustive reading of the strategic plan word by word. Actually, I'm just throwing this out here to remind you of what they are. I'm not going to do highlights of every strategic initiative, but I'll just throw out a couple. So for Strategic Initiative One, tiered instruction. Dr. Hanson could not be here tonight because it's the anxious generation presentation at the library this evening, but she did forward this information on for me. We're going to be continuing on the progress we made this year with the Marzano Focused Teacher Evaluation Model. So for a, you can, you can read as well as I can. For 2526, we're going to have summertime professional development to expand on the work that was done this year, and the focus is going to be to help the principal in the classroom to turn those evaluations into something that is consistent, meaningful, aligned with our instructional playbook, and does provide coaching instead of just evaluation. And if you read The Journey last week, they had an article about that. If you haven't, I would suggest you give it a look. It's very good. Strategic Initiative Two is our positive school culture and safety. If you have any questions here, Jen Sarr is available, but she gave me some highlights to cover. So for our sense of belonging measure, the direct mental health services will grow through the communities and school model. You can read the rest. For behavior, we will deepen implementation of peer-led restorative practices. Those are student-led restorative practices. Building student capacities support conflict resolution and community well-being. And for attendance, we are expanding on the work to create safe, supportive, and inclusive environments. The Attendance Collaborative will continue to drive improvement in regular attendance by aligning student sports and analyzing real-time data across departments. Do you have any questions on that section since she's here?
I'm raising my hand. Oh, do you have a question? You have something?
Is this our only opportunity to ask questions on this strategic initiative? I didn't know if we were just going to go through a presentation.
Oh, I was, I was gonna go through this so fast that I'm barely paying attention to what I'm saying. I'm saying it so fast.
I'm not gonna let you get away with that, Bill.
So is this a time to ask a question about this particular slide?
I just thought that since Jen is here, in case she needed to go anywhere.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'd like to learn a little bit more about the communities and schools model. Is that something you can share with us?
We are in our first year of implementing communities and schools, and so it was a less, a little bit of a lesson learned as we had been participating in the state's consortium around full-service community schools. And so that might be an acronym or a term, I should say, that you're maybe a little bit more familiar with. And what we had recognized at that point is that as a school district, we were providing already many of the supports that were available within the consortium district-wide. And so wanting to continue that implementation, knowing that communities and schools, their, their primary focus, right, is to increase student graduation rates. And so we have been implementing this year in all of our, our high schools, so all three comprehensive high schools, as well as the alternative high school and one of our middle schools. So in five, five locations, we have a full-time social worker who is leading that charge in each of those buildings. The work that they're doing this year for the first time in their social work career with the Fargo Public Schools is directly aligned to their schools, one of their schools' school improvement goals. And so that vertical alignment and really trying to emphasize and focus what that entire building is working on towards improvement comes all the way down to that level of trying to identify what barriers might be getting in the way of some of their students for reaching those goals and providing this community of supports in the schools, hence the name communities and schools, bringing in folks from the outside as well as tapping into the incredible resources that we have by our own school professionals.
Great, thank you. Ally?
So just to kind of further expand on that, I think what I'm hearing is that's the action that you guys are going to take to try to improve this, I guess, if you will, the metric of sense of belonging. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's one of the metrics, right? I think with the idea of sense of belonging or even attendance as well, and even bleeding into Strategic Initiative One, it's hard to tease all of these things out to be a single action that is correlated. So it is one of those pieces around sense of belonging as well as, as attendance and mental health supports too.
So as we think about, okay, so taking a look at all three of these, right, so sense of belonging, how often are we measuring that? And how are, and how are we measuring it, right? So are we surveying the students? Are we surveying teachers? Like, to me, that's a survey type of question, like, do you feel like you're belonging? Because implementing communities and schools is an action that we're taking to help improve that sense of belonging, but sense of belonging is really what we should be measuring.
Yep, and we do measure it. For the last year and this year, we have completed the climate and culture survey three times a year, which is where we have that very explicit question about, I feel like I belong. Also happy to report that that, from last year to this year, we have seen a nice little increase in that. So that's one of the pieces. But I'll just add on to that as well, as we've been planning forward for next year, one of the things that our principals that we met with to gather their input, that they wanted to do more surveying specifically around belonging at their buildings. And so that's also one of the pieces that we'll move forward with, is creating a belonging survey that we can ask of our students that will be specific to each building, or that the results will be specific to each building, so that they can make some real action plans on, on additional next steps. So I completely agree with you. It is trying to align the actions, but yes, communities and schools is an action to try and increase that sense of belonging, recognizing that right now we've been measuring it through the climate and culture survey.
Okay, thank you for flipping back, Bill, because that's what I wanted to see. So yes, these are the, the actual things that we're going to be measuring. What was on the next slide is the actions that we're taking to improve those results. Okay, it was just worded a little bit wonky. Okay, I'm good now. Don't mind me. Greg?
Could you go back to the slide about supporting measures? Is, is that saying that this is going to support measure one, or is supporting measure an actual thing by itself?
It is supporting measure one.
Okay, follow-up questions. One, supporting measures weren't in the unified plan that we were provided with. I don't know where those live.
Well, yeah, maybe I should reword highlights to, call it, highlights of our operational plan projects that support our measures.
Sure. So when, when you said that principals and staff were excited about having less measures, is it because they didn't see these hidden supporting measures and they, they only see four measures?
Yeah. So this is in support of a measure. Now I understand your earlier question. It is not a supporting measure itself.
Okay, that answers my third question, because I was gonna say you can't measure this. This is not a measurable thing.
I think Greg and I are along the same lines, and I think we're both struggling from a data perspective on the wording. If we could just say, like, these are actions that you're taking to help drive a measure versus supporting measure. I think it's maybe just a language.
My apologies on that. It really is just a heading issue. That's exactly what the operational plan projects are supposed to be.
Okay, can we keep going? Robin?
Just very quickly, I know that I heard some really cool data that's coming out of Jefferson Elementary about lowering of the behavior reports, and so I'm very excited to hear what, what is going on and what we can learn from that model as well.
And I think what you're hitting on, right, is a culmination of a variety of pieces. And I know, I know Principal Olson is here and maybe can speak directly to what's happening at Jefferson. I think each of our buildings is taking a look at things like their climate and culture data to help drive their PBIS, their Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Plan, for how they're helping kids to feel like they belong, how they're responding, when there has been a behavior infraction at the building. Again, all integrated. As you review the entire Strategic Initiative Two, you'll see lots of language around tiered approaches to restorative practices, to PBIS. lots of language around tiered approaches to restorative practices, to PBIS, trying to think through the lens of how do we teach all at that tier one? And then how do we continue to support with some strategic intervention at tier two and more intensive at tier three? But recognizing it takes, right, just all of these pieces that sometimes are unique to buildings, but sometimes consistent, that they get to develop in that, by using that data, but developing throughout that tiered framework.
And so they personalize that through their school improvement plans?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, keep going.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, strategic initiatives three and four are pretty well-established. The measures have been sharpened up and focused a little bit, so there aren't so many. But the data that we collect is coming from the same sources. And you just heard from Todd, I believe, last meeting. So we're going to skip over those. We're going to go to my favorite strategic initiative, which is five. And I told Jackie that I'd give her 20 minutes to talk about result one, but we'll probably skip over that. Here's strategic initiative two, which is operations. Three is human capital. And highlights from the operational plan that support these measures. One that I want to highlight is the state of North Dakota is moving us from power school to infinite campus. Infinite Campus has a playbook that they use with every district to convert them. We're scheduled to start that process in September. We're a little anxious about that, because that gives us less than one year to go live on a brand-new system for the entire district. So Jared has created his measure number two and his operational plan. How are we going to keep track and make sure that we're making progress throughout the year? The measure of success for us will end up being, is every principal trained? Is every office staff person trained? Do the teachers know where they're entering their grades and attendance? That's going to be success for us. And then it's kind of small to see, but it's a little teaser. This is a very, very early version of a scorecard in the bottom corner. And the benefit of the way that it's being built right now is Jared is keeping track of his progress in a Google Sheet. He can publish his charts. Stephen can link to those addresses. And in the scorecard, which you'll be able to access, you can click on the chart icon, and it will bring up his progress. So I think I could even show that, because that's what everybody wants to see, right? This is a little mock-up. Jared made up some data just for this meeting, so you can see progress on the operational plan and then the individual items that make up that plan. The benefit to all of our leaders is you can do your work on tracking your operational plan wherever you want. Stephen just needs a way to hook into it so that he can show it on the scorecard. Okay, we're getting really, really close here, folks.
Really quick on that, Bill. So if I'm hearing you correctly, this is kind of some of the stuff that we've talked about, which is teachers are going to have the opportunity, and they're not going to be entering data in multiple different systems just to feed into our reports, correct?
That is, as much as possible, our goal is that what we want people doing is the work toward educating and empowering all students to succeed, and we want to minimize the administrivia.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments so far?
I just wanted to show another example from James on his measure for cleanliness. He's and his team have created a dashboard that they'll be able to use with the buildings. This is a district-wide version, where when they sit down to talk with the building staff, they can look at all of the results from all of the systems that they keep their data in, in one handy dashboard, so that they're talking the same language and they're working from data. And then we just covered this, that it really is about trying to make sure that people are doing the work, and it's my job and Stephen's job and Jared's job to tie it all together and make sure that there's a scorecard that's visible. Now, do you have any questions overall? Ally? Sorry, that's your job.
Okay, sorry. So obviously, we have a new superintendent coming in, in June. We do. When are we expected to actually make a decision on this plan? And is there a way to, we can not do that until Cory's enrolled?
No, the plan is that we will approve it next time, in my understanding that he has been engaged in some of this conversation. Are there other... Do you have anything else to add? Is that correct? Okay. Yes, Greg?
To that point, I think it's worth mentioning that the strategic plan is a living document that does get changed throughout the year, whether we like that or not. It can change if admin sees a need for it to change. So I don't have a large concern about a change in superintendent, though I have had that thought quite a lot going through this.
Go ahead, Bill.
And we're making the commitment that if we change anything measure or up, we will run it by you, so you're aware that we're talking about a change. Operational plan projects, we might give you a little bit of a heads-up, but that really is a change-on-the-fly operations item.
Okay, other questions? Robin?
Thank you all to the cabinet for taking the feedback of the board and the staff. I think this will allow our staff members to really drill deeper and not be spread so thin. And so this was a collaborative effort, and I congratulate you. Thank you.
Okay, so are we... Yeah, thanks. Okay, so are we good with this? Because it is, we're not taking any action, so next meeting we will see, right? Is it next meeting that we'll see the final, I think? Okay. Yes.
I have, like, 30 questions. I don't know if this is like...
I would suggest that you connect with Dr. Gandhi and Bill Westrick outside the meeting, then.
Well, so...
Sorry, go ahead.
I think some of them range... I think some of them could be important for the board to discuss, unless you want to empower me to give administration direction on how to change the plan for our next board.
Well, I mean, for starters, I would say if you had very significant questions, I would hope that you would have asked them before this meeting, so that that could have been known before we came here.
I have asked some questions of administration, but also I think some are things for the board to consider.
So my suggestion would be if you have a couple high-level questions for us, that you can bring them now, if you think it's going to impact... Like, this is the first reading, so this is our time to share that information. But we will review it again. And so at that point in time, you know, there will be more time for questions or even potential, like, changes if you want to try to request that.
Well, if we don't discuss some things now, the next time we see this document, it's going to be the exact same, right? So I'm not sure at what point...
Okay, so again, I would say if you have a couple high-level questions, ask them. But if you, you obviously cannot direct them as one person. I know that you know that.
Yes, I do know that.
But I would say if you do go and have conversations with them, and you bring things to them that they, as a cabinet, feel are worthy of changing, they would ultimately make that decision before they bring it to us. Just like how they created this now, right? Like, if you point out something that seems... If any one of us reached out and said, "I have a concern about this," and as a group they talked about it, and they decided to make a change, that they would bring to us.
Sure, I guess, you know, maybe this is part of a continuing discussion about who owns this plan and who doesn't. If we're saying the board doesn't own the plan, then I'm not sure what level of direction or thought we need to give to different components.
So do you have a few high-level questions that you would like to ask right now?
Sure, here's an exemplar.
Or feedback you'd like to provide for them to consider?
Where does ECSC fit into our strategic plan? It's not really mentioned kind of at all. I have a few ideas of where it probably should be, but I know it's something that we devote resources to in no small amount, and I just don't see it.
I think that's a great question, and maybe it's our wording we have to change, but we do believe they fit under both initiative one and two completely. They are part of our catalyst movement. We have instructional coach, just like we have at our other buildings, swift time as we go forward. But I guess what I'm saying is, I think, probably missed the language of saying it is not just a K-12, it is a pre-K-12 as it goes forward. But Greg, I would love to hear if there is a suggestion you have.
So I also thought that strategic initiative one was pretty squarely something for ECSC and the measures that we have, measures one through three, don't... I'm not, like, even reading them generously. I'm not sure where ECSC could possibly fit in there.
Yeah, so the one measure that we've been working on this year, so they can participate, is they have made a progress report, similar to the progress report we're using for the ELOs, because they have standards for our four-year-olds going to five. And so that was created this year, which next year would give us the data to monitor to be part of our ELO piece. But you're right, it's, they're not going to... Just like the elementary is not going to be part of choice-ready. So they would not be a part of that one.
So what you're saying, Missy, is that underneath measure two, underneath strategic initiative one, if you were to add a sentence in there specific to the early childhood component, that would... What you just highlighted there, which is, this is the progress that we're monitoring them on, we don't have historical data to go look against, but this is how we are planning to monitor this.
Yep. I guess the thing would be, do we change the wording, or does the wording work because they have standards, too? And we had prioritized the same standards that we're doing at the elementary, but we'd be public about it by having a reporting form.
We'll have the baseline at the end of this year with the first year of progress reports. So this is next year's plan, so we should be able to compare the two, correct?
No. They created it this year, so we just finished that part. But I don't mind if you guys... I want to be clear, so if it's adding a line in there, specific, because they function a little different, but I was hoping they'd be captured within that ELO one.
Robin?
Being somebody that has to write a strat plan and an operational plan, you can... There is no way you can mention every single program that's implemented. And that was the direction the board gave you to make at higher levels, so that all those details aren't there. I would think it's appropriate for individual members to request reports for certain departments without totally changing the structure of... The whole point is the higher-level strat plan and operational plan. And for us to get too much into the operations, to your previous conversation, what needs to be where, it seems like we haven't landed at that, but I like this format.
Did you have another question? Oh, sorry, Dr. Gandhi?
And I would just say that, to Missy's point of... Because we've had many conversations about aligning the success of ECSC to the strategic plan measures. I appreciate this conversation and the question, Greg, because I think this is exactly what this space should be. But I do think it's a philosophical piece in terms of, do we want to put ECSC in there now, knowing that that's an investment that we're making, obviously something that we do through Childfind? And then we could put ECSC programmatically into the strategic plan as something that we continue to invest in and operate? Or we could go the other way around, which is the approach that administration is taking, which is the goals that we are applying to kindergarten through 12th grade should also be the same goals that we use to measure the success of the ECSC program. So as long as we know that not every data point is going to be applicable to ECSC, but the ones that are, if we can present that to the board, then that will, a year from now, tell you if, whether or not your investment and your strategies into that program were successful, and you'll be able to benchmark that against the success and efficacy of all the other programs in the district as well.
Okay, do you have another question?
Yeah, I asked this of Bill, so we'll see if he has a nice response by now. Can all of the measures be actually measured by the time that the results policy is going to be monitored by this board? For example, this year, we had a lot of instances, when we were monitoring results policies, where we were told, "Oh, this is a new initiative. We don't have any data on this." Yet it was included as part of the measures that we were expecting to judge our achievement on. Can all of the measures be measured in time?
I circled back to every strategic initiative team leader after we finalized what the measures and the operational plans were going to be, and asked the very simple question, "How are you going to illustrate to me that you can show the progress on the measure? And also, let's go through the operational plan and confirm for me that you can show a progress update for all of those as well." I have one person left to talk to.
Anne Marie? Greg, do you mean conclusive data?
No, I'm saying stuff that says, you know, like, if we're going to hit this metric by the end of the year to show that we improved over previous data, well, we don't have previous data, so we can't show progress, that type of stuff.
Gotcha. Ally?
Just a suggestion on that, maybe that is a governance, like, planning perspective on when we look at those results, looking at what the measures are, what time of the year would be the better time to assess those results, right? If we're talking about tiered instruction and the completion of that, we should maybe be looking at that results policy in, like, the May timeframe, as an example, just a thought.
Governance could look at, it would be in GPAD. We could look at that. Yeah, I think that seems very reasonable. Do you have other questions, Greg?
I'll just maybe ask one more. This is probably more for the board. For result two of strategic initiative four, the result is FPS will establish partnerships and relationships with nonprofit agencies, businesses, governments, subdivisions, college/university programs to support student academic success. So basically, FPS has established relationships, partnerships, to support student academic success. There's one measure, and it is about dual credit and work experience program. And I know where I would, how I would answer this question, but I'm not sure if that measure really tells the board that we've achieved result two. For starters, it's only about secondary students.
Does anyone want to take that or respond to it?
I can start, because there are things that we do at the elementary level. I think I was having difficulty thinking of how to document it for a measure. So I'll just give an example. We work closely with the area colleges to bring students in, but we do it for a couple of reasons, right? One, we know when students come in and work in our buildings, it is one of our best recruiting strategies that we have, is to show them how we do business and let them know that we're interested in them, too. So Valley-City-State, for example, and Sarah is actually here, too, if you wanted to hear about it, but they come in and do a huge reading intervention in the fall with all of their students who are seniors, Sarah. So the senior-level students, but that partnership is really critical to us, as we found, being able to work directly with Valley-City-State. Jeff, is Jeff online? Because Jeff has probably been our most...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jeff, I thought maybe, too, the partnerships that you do with our para... Okay, Jeff, I thought maybe too, the partnerships that you do with our para-to-teacher pipeline.
Yeah, in addition to what Missy said regarding our partnership where we can embed and support Valley City State University slash NDSU students into a few of our campuses, we have partnerships with Concordia, Morehead, Valley City. We have student teachers from other places across the state that come in and support our work and get their clinical experiences. We have well over 42 of our peer professionals working with a variety of different universities on our para-to-teacher pipeline. And all of those programs allow for a residency where they can support our kiddos, reduce our class sizes, be in a co-teach model, learn and earn in some cases. And then, of course, just like Missy said on the front side is, have that exposure to FPS where we can recruit them into positions that they have already had some experience in.
Dr. Gandhi?
This past year's strategic plan also had, in this area, a measure focused on education-related dual credit, and we talked about that too. I know your question is specific to, with the partnerships, why is there only one measure? I actually think that, that is a good thing. And the reason for that is, we know that we are CT, like, we provide a wide variety of opportunities for our students within CTE programming, but if you listen to the narrative around workforce shortages and the request for funding around CTE, like, it still comes off as if that is an under-invested area, but as we start approaching tightness and resources that we're going to have as a district, that's the reason we're trying to have a strategic focus, right? What's most important to us? The focus on focusing on education-related and work, dual credit programs and work programs has a dual purpose. Not only is it the dual credit metric that students have, and they have across all of their disciplines, but this one will also feed a future workforce for Fargo Public Schools, which will then hit all the R3, Strategic Initiative Five, R3 measures that we have as well. So I actually think that limiting it to one measure in this area is good, because we are constantly being asked for more money from partnerships in other great opportunities for students, which we don't want to deny, especially in the CTE realm. However, we just are not getting funded that way from the legislature at this point.
Robin?
Again, having experience in writing these, they're, some of these are already foundational practices, there's no reason to put them in a strategic operational plan, and because they've already, like you said, once you're so good at it, you take it off the operations plan because it's a foundational practice. And so, again, they are presenting exactly what we, that we asked them to, and that was having targeted resources. And when Cabinet introduces stuff to us, they also are realistic in what can be done for the year based on workload. And so, how far do we want to spread them with the operational piece? Because, again, the board is not in charge of operational pieces, but that, again, goes back to the conversation about who owns what.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I don't think, you know, this measure is really an operational thing. I think all the things underneath it, list, operational plan projects are operational. But, again, those only are about dual credit and work experience program when the result itself is much broader. And I, you know, I probably want to push back a little bit on the notion that something that we're really good at doesn't have to be on our, you know, strategic plan and not something that we don't want to continue to measure. If that was true, we would just drop Strategic Initiative Three, because our co-curricular activities and engagement are exceptional, off the charts, that we, honestly, we could probably drop that and just never have to worry about it. But knowing that it's there is a good excuse to make sure that the organization as a whole still recognizes its value and continues to excel in that area.
Do we feel ready to move on to the next memo? Are we okay with that? Okay, I would highly encourage you, if you have questions or want more clarification, especially now that we have this document in front of us, to reach out to Dr. Gandhi and get that clarity. I don't think there's actually anything wrong with asking questions for clarity that could lead to changes that they would then bring to us at the next meeting. So I'm, I would highly encourage you to do that before the next meeting, or everybody. Okay, so our next memo is 110, Memo 110 is coming to us from the Planning Committee. So I'm going to turn it over to Greg to give us a brief introduction, and then I think Missy's going to walk us through the new project.
All right, so Planning Committee has been discussing this, I think, since January. And really, the entire topic was, or is really born out of current and projected, I guess, overcrowding at some of our schools in the southern part of the district. It is only elementary schools, but there are some schools that have more students than we would like, kind of crowding them, and that is projected to only get worse over at least the next five years. And so Planning Committee, hearing that, looking at that data, really tasked administration to come up with a plan to solve that problem, and not just in a temporary way, but saying, all right, you know, how can we solve it so that it's, the capacity issues are immediately relieved, but also in a way that, given our projections, would still not have to do this over and over again because we failed to project? And they brought it back to Planning Committee, and we, as a committee, thought, you know, this looks pretty good, let's bring it to the full board and see what, see what we have to say. So with that, I'll pass over to Missy.
Okay, and just one, I want to remind us again also that we're not proving anything tonight. This is where, this is our first look at it, and we are doing this for the purpose of questions and feedback that Cabinet will take away from this meeting before bringing it back to us at the next meeting.
So I appreciate how Greg kind of framed it. When we're looking at our enrollment, and as we cast out for the next five years, we are concerned especially about Bennett and Centennial for being over capacity. And I do appreciate that Sarah is here, Sarah Schaefer, Principal of Bennett. Bennett would be a building where we have, we went up to what we'd call capacity. We actually had to put a portable at that site. Couple of things that, when you get at capacity, that we didn't realize till we were in the heat of it, is you can sometimes add another classroom, but your ancillary space matters. And so we were struggling with gym space, music space, and some of those other areas, even special education space. So we started realizing that the capacity piece two has to be looked at from all aspects of the educational experience as we went forward. So we did take a parcel of land that was in the Bennett area, and it was switched to Centennial, which took, brought us back down to 30 sections instead of 32 at Bennett. And that area has continued to grow. And so it started off with a few students taking the bus from that area to Centennial, and that bus route has just been adding students throughout the year because it's a growing area. So as we look at that now, Centennial is our new largest building as that goes forward. So the first piece that I want to draw your attention to, and I thought it'd be easier just to make sure I have it up on the screen, is that we went through a long-range facility plan with the, with the community and really looking at things, and a lot of the emphasis was more on the north side of town, because we have underutilization there. And so really working through what we call the adequacy ratio and the capacities, we started looking, I thought on the south side, we need to look at all the buildings on the south side also. What's interesting is, we do have two buildings that are underutilized, and that is Eagles and Lincoln. And so how do we look at this to make a change once to hopefully allow us to have, you know, six to 10 years before we'd have to build a new building, which we think would be on the very south side of town? In the long-range facility plan, what we say is, you need to have at least half the population for that new building before you would build. We look like we're going to stay at about the same numbers, but we have what we call shifting numbers. We're a very long district, we're going to grow mainly on the south side as we go forward. So if we take a look at the, where we're at today of just the buildings, and what we're looking at here is the boundary of Interstate is really what we're using for the south-side boundary there of Lincoln, Eagles, Ed Clapp, Kennedy, Centennial, and Bennett. And so we just started working with the software that we have to look at what would some options be, and also what would be clean boundary lines as we go forward. And that would be the recommendation we have here. And as you can see, Lincoln actually would go into Blument Lakes a little bit to stabilize their enrollment. Ed Clapp would go down a little further into Centennial. And Eagles, actually, the adjustment we made there is they went up into Lincoln to see if we could get those three buildings to maintain. For Centennial and Bennett, the population at 76th Avenue would keep those two buildings below capacity for the next five to, we're thinking could be six to 10 years as we move forward. Now, again, predictions get less accurate the more years you go out, so we always have to be checking on that. We do have more space available to us at Kennedy, and that is where Kennedy is the first building I wanted to highlight, where then everything to the south of 76 would go to Kennedy until we're able to build the new elementary school that we come forward. I did try to provide, because it's too hard to see the streets, so that you can see the boundaries, that could be a possibility. And again, these are possibilities as we go. Then a highlighted map of what Lincoln, Eagles, and Ed Clapp would look like, again, with the boundaries. Then Centennial, I did not put the south end of town on there just to show there'd be an adjustment to Centennial on its south end. What we found out is Rose Creek, we really do not have that many students in that area where the golf course is, low density. And then there's a picture showing Bennett's boundaries. But I think it's the numbers that we need to look at and answer questions around. So we just had to pick a date for the current enrollment. That was off of our RSP, but I will say already, like, Bennett is, is around 620 as of today. So we have our current enrollment, our projected enrollment in five years from RSP. If we change the boundaries, what it would be, and we're looking at the fall of '26, we do believe anytime you change boundaries, you have to do a lot of communication, work with families as we go forward. And so that would be, what would happen is, we'd be able to stabilize the enrollment at Bennett and Centennial. Kennedy does go up. And then we did our best for projected enrollment, but I need you to know that that is calculated by us off of the numbers we have. And I highlighted Centennial and Bennett for when they reach capacity in orange. If we go to the next slide or next table, what we're looking at is current utilization, and our target is 85 to 90% utilization at a building, and that's when you take their enrollment divided by their capacity. What happens is, you need that flexibility around individual needs. And so I talked to all the principals that are affected, asking them for some examples of things. And one example was, there are times throughout the year where sometimes a student may need an individual space for part of a day or half the day, depending on what we're working through. And sometimes, when we were at capacity at Bennett a few years ago, there were no open spaces, and it was harder to provide some services that was needed. We also have found the same thing about just the opportunities we want every child to receive. We start, if you start needing more classrooms, sometimes we give up music space, art space, and that also has some repercussions as, as we go through. But we, we believe the best way to do it is to have them in their own home room as we go. So then, after the recommended new boundaries, would have the projected enrollment that's in the middle column, and it shows that we would have a much better projected utilization under those boundaries in the future. So what the thing, the piece that I think we need to look at is, is this, does this feel right to stabilize us for the next, you know, six years, six to probably eight years, as we're, we know growth will be on the south side? The last chart is something that usually we are asked for, so I did include it. What would it do to our free-to-do lunch or special ed populations? It's two pieces of data that I was able to provide as we go forward. And then it comes into what's called the Phase End Plan. I have met with transportation. They, they felt this would be very helpful to have a year to prepare for anything like this for bus rerouting, what that would look like. There is no longer with the shortage of bus drivers in our community where we are able to offer an extra bus from an area we move to their old school. We are more than able to grandfather in kids that have started at a building and let them finish, but the transportation would be on the family if that was a choice. But transportation, we have talked, and that is not something they could extend as we go forward. So wanted to make sure we were putting all the facts that we could together to examine tonight. And then, of course, our communication plan, and I thought then we could answer questions.
Okay. Robin?
So you mentioned the long-range facility plan, and that is board-approved. And I would want to draw everybody's attention to inside the long-range facility plan or the guiding principles. So this is your interpretation of the board-approved guiding principles for, and I think that's what we need to pay attention to, responding to enrollment growth areas, right? So thank you for providing the details, because this is always, this always gathers a lot of attention, but I think your interpretation of the board-approved direction is spot-on. We can disagree about which street goes where, but thank you for following that.
Ellie?
So I know this is the first reading of this. My major concern, and I'll just be transparent on it, Bennett and Centennial are the two school districts or two elementary schools that would be the most affected by any growth. And I understand that you've got that, some projections in there, but that's where the building is happening, right? So everything is happening in that southern area of town, and I know that with the proposal, obviously, it moves like all the stuff, the Wild Rice area into, into Kennedy primarily. I guess I would like to see if there's a way that we, I guess my suggestion on how I would do this is, if we're talking about Eagles, Ed Clapp, and Lincoln, those schools are already landlocked, there's not going to be any additional growth or new building or new housing going into those neighborhoods. I would like to see more of a higher number on those utilizations versus seeing the 100% or 101% at Bennett and 97 at Centennial. Does that make sense? Like, I would like to see Eagles, Ed Clapp, and Lincoln be at like 95 to 100, where giving some breathing room to Bennett and Centennial for the next upcoming years, that would really allow for more growth. where giving some breathing room to Bennett and Centennial for the next upcoming years, that would really allow for more growth.
And I might have misspoke, but the projected utilization, we're at 101, is under our current boundaries. If we don't do anything.
Oh, so that's not with the changes?
So, and if you look to the right, then the proposed utilization, we could drop those. Does that help?
It does a little, um, I still feel like, I would still like to see Eagles, Ed Clapp and Lincoln be higher, just knowing that we still have a continuous number of like new lots being sold in that area and things like that, so.
Would you want Eagles to go, uh, since the recommendation is 85 to 90%, they're already at 93?
The proposed utilization of column four?
Yeah, the very last column, yep. Eagles would be, we're projecting them to be at 93%.
Okay, you're talking in, in the 20, in six, in six years, or five years, five years, yours, okay.
And that's really just looking for guidance.
Is there a way to look at Lincoln going higher? Because if we're saying that's only at 53, and those two are next to each other, adjusting some in between there?
Um, definitely. I think I just need some direction from the board on what we're thinking.
Go ahead, Greg.
Um, I guess first, the, um, I totally agree that it would be nice if we could say, oh yeah, we'll kind of shift some of the boundaries so that we can get Ed Clapp, Eagles and Lincoln up a little more. The problem, um, with that is, um, we would have to shift it south of the actual buildings of Centennial and Kennedy to, to really achieve that, unfortunately. And, um, but yeah, uh, to the, to your point of, um, you know, Lincoln being at 53% and Eagles at 93%, this is something that, um, I spoke with, uh, Missy about last week, I think it was last week, um, and kind of warned her like, hey, I'm gonna be bringing this up. Um, and she, um, already has kind of worked with, uh, Mr. Hand to, um, come up with a, a, a bit of a rebalancing of that. Oh, wonderful, she's got it ready for us already.
So, I think what is good, we're all drawn to the same numbers. Um, and so Greg had mentioned this too. So, what we have on the proposed one in front of you is Eagles would continue this greenish color through the pink rectangle. But I went and took the pink rectangle and put it back at Lincoln. And I'll just let you know what that, if we just made that slight adjustment, what that would do is Eagles would then be at, um, in the fall of '26, would be at a 78% utilization, and in five years would be at 84, um, because they would, wouldn't have as many kids. Lincoln would start then at a 65% utilization, instead of being at the 50. Um, but then we would have them in five years drop to 59 is our best guess right now. So we do think that Lincoln, right now, we're thinking it might get smaller.
Is there, and I don't know what road this is, but like the road that goes right in front of it there, is that 32nd? What is that one? I don't know, but you, you see what I'm talking about, the edge of your triangle here? So if we were just to continue Lincoln straight across there?
That's what it is right now.
That's what it is right now.
Yep, and so, yes, you're right. It's hard to then, um, and I think what Greg said is correct. The hardest part is 40th Avenue is where Centennial sits. So that little purple box that we're looking at right there, that is Centennial, because they're like across the street from the school. So just, again, open for suggestions, tried, um, willing to try more things. But we do have, we struggle a little bit with the placement of the schools too.
Kristin?
Oh, sorry, um, go ahead.
Um, for Kennedy, you know, any proposal that we draw up, um, especially for Kennedy, since it's the biggest change, do we talk to transportation on what like a bus time looks like, especially for the way south on Kennedy?
Bob might have to help me if I'm forgetting, but when we talked to them about that, there are some efficiencies they felt that they could do or improve, because they run, I think, three rural routes. And so those routes might pick up students on the way, um, as they go. The Centennial route right now that, um, they've already think next year we have to add a route to Centennial, um, as we go forward. But they felt they could have it be reasonable.
Amory, did you want to add something?
For some of you, this will be your first time doing attendance boundary changes. And so I just want to share some history as far as what some feedback you will get. Um, some of these, um, boundaries, um, as we've already talked about, get off some major boundary or, uh, street boundaries, right? And it's, um, like this, what Missy is sharing with you right now, um, a different option. A lot of feedback that we'll get from families is keeping neighborhoods intact, or all going to the same school. So I'm just, um, prepping you that some areas might say, but you're splitting up our neighborhood, okay? So that's some feedback you're going to get, you're, you're going across some different street boundaries. That might be some feedback that you're going to get. Um, like we just talked about, trying to, that 40th Avenue and for Centennial, um, a lot of times you'll get feedback of, but I can see that school from my backyard, and you're sending me to a different school, right? Like, this is some of the feedback that you may get, um, when families see this information. So, it, they're hard decisions, of course. Um, one other thing that I would share, uh, for someone who's been here a little bit, and has been through a number of boundary changes, is that we monitor these regularly because school attendance areas fluctuate, right? We're talking about Lincoln right now going down. Just a number of years ago, Lincoln was busting, right? We had to bring a portable there, we were over capacity. So, things happen with housing, um, families buy a house and they might not move, and then their kids graduate and they don't have kids in our system anymore. So things, things could change, and maybe we'd have to come back after a few years and say, hey, this school has changed over, and we're seeing an increase, right? Things, things can happen, and like you guys said, the south part of town is growing, but neighborhoods can flip over sometimes as well. So just wanted to share with you some historical aspect of some feedback that you could hear about, about some of these things of, of changing some of those lines. That's not to say don't do it, but just trying to brief you, as I know some of you have not been through this process before.
Dr. Gandhi?
And for what it's worth, I was just looking through the long range facilities plan that the board approved in May. And when it comes to these two issues, we have two different like terminologies. So, there's, as Robin mentioned, there's district guiding principles that say, these are the guiding principles a district should use when making decisions in response to enrollment growth or, um, enrollment decreases. And that talks about transportation times, school sizes, thoroughfares and so forth. But then, at the front of the LRFP, there was, uh, long range facility plan goals, which is the intended outcome once the plan is executed. So one of those goals is trying to pursue an approximate 85% utilization. So when you have those two things against one another, I think maybe one way to look at it is, is one the goal and one the driving principle for the decision, or is it the other way around? But that's how you have it in your approved plan.
Greg.
I, I'm glad you brought up utilization percentages, because that was, I, I think maybe the first question that I, I asked Missy was, um, to provide, um, maybe some more clarification and rationale of, you know, why we don't aim for 100% utilization, you know, in the name of efficiency, and why we should maybe start hearing alarms as soon as we see numbers over, you know, 90%. Um, I, uh, would you, uh?
Yeah, so James and I, um, had a conversation about it, and then it was reinforced by, uh, just meeting with the principals, um, just gave them each a call. Once you, like I, I think the examples I used is, you do need a certain amount of space that can be flexible at a building. Um, once we get to 95%, 100, we are very uncomfortable. Um, the only option we have is increasing class size, but we do not have what we'd call our specialized spaces. Um, those need to go, so that we can have classroom space.
So, I, on, one other point, and to, I guess, help maybe for your next reading is, my only major concern is at that 50% mark, we also start losing those educational opportunities as well, right? We're starting to reduce to, two sections per, per grade level, or even one section per grade level, which is also the other end of that spectrum, where we're not having enough capacity to provide all of those educational opportunities as well. So I would say that's the, that's that balancing act for me, is we don't want anything over, but we also don't want anything too under, because we want to make sure that all kids have the, the opportunities, as well as I want to, I would emphasize again, making sure that Bennett and Centennial have a little bit more wiggle room just for that upcoming potential growth. That's, okay, go ahead.
Um, I, so, um, the low utilization, um, impacting, um, like programming and stuff, I think, um, in this particular case, I don't think is true, because Lincoln is actually a really big school. And so having Lincoln at like 60%, they're still, they're going to have three sections, I imagine.
They would be mainly a three-section building, it could be two, if the numbers fell right. Like if you ended up with fifth grade at 49 kids, you'd do two sections. Yep, so it'd be a three to two-section building.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the boundary change draft that we have in front of us, review? Okay, Ally.
Sorry, I know, one more question. Are we going to see a secondary boundary change with this as well, or is this just elementary?
I think it's just elementary.
Okay.
The secondary boundaries are not changing at all. So, a student who is whatever building they're at, their middle school and high school is still determined by the address they're at right now.
Okay, so, um, that concludes our business section. Um, we're going to move on to board reports now, and so, um, I will start, Ally, can I start with you? All right, let's start with Ally.
All right, I will try to make this quick. Um, so first of all, I wanted to echo Dr. Gandhi's sentiments around teacher and staff appreciation last week. Um, thank you to everybody that is a part of FPS and ensuring that all of our kids, um, get the education that they deserve. Um, Les Mis, if you missed it at Fargo North, you missed it, because seriously, you guys, let me tell you, I, I laughed, I cried, I had chills, I was so completely and utterly blown away. So a huge congratulations to everybody at Fargo North for that presentation and production. It, the singing was, I, yeah, amazing. Um, again, echoing some of the other stuff tonight, the anxious generations, I, um, am bummed to miss that, but I also know that I've read the book, and I'm grateful that our district is continuing to do outreach on that. Workday proposals, I've fielded quite a few questions from teachers coming in on that. I've appreciated the conversations around that, um, and helping to provide clarity. I think the biggest piece of question that has been coming in from teachers on that is that they're concerned that the additional time on the elementary day is going to be more student contact time. And so being able to really emphasize that, no, it's, it's time for them and their collaboration with their peers, so. Um, and then my last piece was my fun thing that I just got to do at Longfellow, which was our school carnival, was a huge success and lots of fun. It's my favorite event to be able to do for the, the kids every year at Longfellow, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, since the last board meeting, I met with, uh, Dr. Steiner and just had a great conversation, and then also attended planning, nothing else to report.
Thank you. Nimal? Uh, can you turn your mic, please? Thank you.
Sometimes we just forget these things, once in a while. So, um, I had an opportunity to, to attend, that's one of the reasons why I was late for, uh, governmental affair last week, a week before that. Um, I attended, I went to Dakota High School for, um, for student celebration for their, um, I think that's the one that they do every year, it was just incredible. Um, accolades, I learned so much about accolades, um, from 2015 to 2016 of how they measure their students with, uh, with their, with their GPA and so forth, and just going by, um, how many student they are every year and so forth. So from 2015 to 2016, they gone, um, from 15 student all the way to, to 21 students. And then from 2022 to 2024, they went to, um, to 28 students. And then, um, and then this year, from 2024 to 2025, they went, um, they really like increased to 40 students, which is like 3.4 GPA student. And I was just really like, wow, that's amazing, so you know, and, and like just, they had so much accomplishment for all these students. And just compared, you know, they're gone from 15 to all the way to 40 students who have a 3.4 GPA. And some of them are even taking college courses and so forth. So I went over there, and, um, I celebrate with them, we get to eat amazing food and so forth. And then I get to attend my others', uh, planning committees and others, thank you. Sorry, I miss Les, Les Miers?
Les Mis, okay. All right, Robin. Robin?
Um, outside of just committee attendance, our governmental affairs committee did meet, and our bylaws or our governance policies say we need to meet quarterly. So I think we're going to wait until the, the board reorg before we, we meet again. Um, and then, um, my other assigned committee liaison appointment is SEEK. Uh, we did have a governing board meeting on May 7th. Um, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but during our, our updates, our, our readout, if you will, I'm going to provide a lot of documentation as addendums, because I don't think a lot of people realize all that they do. Um, they're involved with the AmeriCorps cutbacks, they're involved with, um, childcare development block grants, um, they manage a lot of things, so I will send that. And the other, other low light from that meeting is one of my fellow board members, Dr. Corey Steiner, can no longer serve on that committee, because he's moving to Fargo. So, that's fine, I'll get to spend more time with you here.
Greg?
Planning committee members, uh, you're gonna still have to meet before reorg. Uh, we're, we're still having our June meeting. I, I also, um, met with Dr. Steiner since our last board meeting. Um, I attended, um, legislative recap, um, with some representatives and senator from, uh, from within the district to, um, you know, a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, legislation that was passed, um, some that wasn't passed, um, that, um, you know, we were able to have discussions about, um, how it might be able to be passed in the future, and different strategies that we can take. And, um, you know, uh, government affairs committee, you know that the, the work for next session starts, well, it's already started, um, so, um, you know, um, lots of stuff to be hopeful for in the future there. Um, and then, um, I, uh, last week I attended, um, a meeting of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association. Um, they had invited myself as the planning chair, and then James Hand, to discuss, the long range facilities plan and, and how that's kind of progressing. And I was able to give them an, an update, um, I, I, but I told them that, uh, I wish they had scheduled a meeting for three weeks from now, because our work session, I think, is going to be much more illuminating than anything I was able to tell them now. Um, but to check back in three weeks, um, and that's it.
Okay, thanks. Melissa?
Yeah, so I also had my meeting with Dr. Steiner. Um, I attended a Ben Franklin Middle School PTO meeting. Um, they were gearing up for teacher appreciation week, and then also had a lot of questions about the long range facility plan and how it would about the long-range facility plan and how it would impact that school. Um, I also gave them the advice that to stay tuned because we are gonna be having, um, a big work session that will illuminate our plans going forward a lot more. Um, I will also echo Les Mis, can't stop thinking about it, it was absolutely amazing and I think just goes to show what talent and amazing energy we have at Fargo South, or Fargo Public Schools, sorry. Um, and, um, so I'm gonna give a really high-level overview, um, about what we've done so far for negotiations, we've been really busy. Um, we are going to be using a executive session this evening, so I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, um, but I do want to tell you that we have, um, proposed all, we have laid all of our proposals down. Um, we've gotten very close or have completed, um, tentative agreements on several of them. Um, we have, and I'm just gonna tick off what we've done, we've done, um, editorials, we've proposed a notification of, um, teaching assignments change, um, we proposed a notification of vacancies, um, so this would change how vacancies within our system are, um, are, are put up, and we're gonna be moving to an exclusively online system. Um, we have made proposals to leave and, um, the FEA has also done proposals to parental leave and leave, we're very close on coming to an agreement on parental leave, um, and then also leave bank, which we had all, kind of already pre-decided, but even going into this. What we have left outstanding is, um, we made proposal, changes to our overload assignment calculations, um, our workday calculations, um, how our counselors', um, jobs are laid out and structured. Um, and then we've both talked abstractly about salary, um, but nobody has proposed a matrix yet, so I'm anticipating that we will get a matrix from the FEA on Wednesday, tomorrow's our next session. Um, we've also made proposals to change our pay system from a monthly system to bi-weekly. Um, that is still in pretty deep conversation. Um, I think I have covered everything that we have gotten through, um, but we're meeting tomorrow, we have meetings scheduled every week through May. Um, I'm very hopeful that we'll have an agreement before the end of the school year, that I think is everybody's goal. Um, and our committee meeting is on Thursday at noon, so, and we're meeting weekly at this point, too, so you've, it's, it's, it's the time.
It is the time. Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's all I have. Okay, thank you, Melissa. Kristen?
Um, yeah, so I sent a congratulations email to Ms. Dillard at Explorer Academy for her appointment to be the principal there. Um, she is going to be a fantastic, uh, principal at that building, and Dr. Lean, we talked to, and, um, he is, he's very, very happy to leave it into her hands, so they're in good shape there. Um, I met with Fargo Youth Initiative two weekend, two Sundays ago, I believe, um, and we mainly talked about, um, the cell phone policy, you know, trying to get some, to hear their thoughts, obviously, and also try to clarify some things a little bit to make the, the change, um, less painful, um, and try to get them to think about this in a different way. So we, we had a very rich discussion about that, and we also talked about, um, some ways to, um, integrate our youth student voices throughout the district in a more meaningful way, um, other than negotiations emails, you know, to teachers and things. Uh, I also went to Les Mis on Saturday, and that was fantastic, I took my daughter, I cried at the end, it was so good, and her biggest question after the movie, or after the play was, well, I guess she had two, how do they sing like that? And how do they go on and continue their lives after such a big show? So those are the things she really wanted to know, if anybody has any insight, I'd love to fill her in, and we are now watching the twenty-twelve movie, so.
I think they're asking themselves that second question right now, too. It was just so consuming for quite a while.
So that is everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, for my president's report, I'll share that, um, I participated in the For Sparta Band Festival as a judge, um, and I also saw Les Mis. Uh, my son, was this, oh, that's in my notes, I was gonna get to that. Uh, my son is a senior, and so this was his last theater performance at North, and I saw it seven times in eleven days, and I still actually really miss not going to it every evening, so I feel a little lost without getting to go sit and watch, um, those wonderful humans perform. And I, it's, I mean, everybody says it's a great show, and it's just even better when it's your child and his friends that you've known for ages up there, so they just were all so grown up and amazing. Um, but I think coming off this, it would be of no surprise that hopefully you all saw, um, the media release yesterday that our district has again been awarded a best community in music education. Um, this is the sixteenth year in a row that our district has received that, um, and if you saw Les Mis, you would completely understand why we deserve that recognition. Um, also wanna share that governance met yesterday, um, we came up with our agenda for our work session, and that is in the minutes, if you look at those from our governance committee meeting. Um, we also talked a little bit about potential memberships and participation in, um, there're kind of two different national orgs that work with school board associations, NSBA and COSBA, um, and so we will likely be, be bringing some information and, um, potential actions to, um, future board meetings on that. Um, that's all I have for my president's report. Um, we are gonna go into executive session, so I'm suspecting that, do we wanna make a motion and then people can scurry out that don't get to stay in the room? Does that sound like a plan? Are you gonna start packing up right now? Okay. What? Yeah, we need him, well, he's gonna start packing up.
I move that we go to executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under NDCC forty-four dash oh-four dash nineteen-point-one and fifteen-point-one dash sixteen dash twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion from Allie and a second from Namaal. Anne Marie? Oh, sorry, do you need to?
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest.
Sure.
So I will be abstaining from this motion and this conversation.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, thank you. Um, Anne Marie, do you wanna do the roll call, please?
Absolutely, Day.
Yes.
Kristen Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Olenberger?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
Kristen, am I near?
Yes.
So that motion passes six-zero? Um, and so, yeah, if you are not part of our executive committee meetings, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Bye.
Session, we're onto item 10. Our next regular meeting is May 27th. It is now 8:04 PM and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.